Talk anymore?
I think we're all here. John, would you lead us into our invocation?
Dear heaven and father, we just come to you today, Lord, and just ask you to be with us and each and everybody here, Lord, just be with each and everybody making decisions on board, Lord, and we just ask you to keep a hedge of protection around to our community. These things we ask in your holy precious name, amen.
Samantha, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and convene our meeting, start with our roll call. Misty Cottle?
Here.
Jeff Upton?
Here.
Jan Throgmorton?
Here.
Marty Lindelberry?
Here.
John Collins?
Here.
Dana McKnight?
Here.
Don Rollins? Jimmy Condon?
He just walked in.
He did? Okay. Our city attorney, city clerk are both present. We'll start with the adoption of our agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda that need to be noted? If not, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve it as if you're second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say yes? Those opposed, no, that motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes from February fourteenth meeting. Do we have any changes that need to be made to those?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes, that's my old.
Second.
I did have one change, I'm sorry.
Oh, you did, okay, I was wondering what was going on.
I thought Misty was gonna point it out, but approval of minutes from, it says February fourteenth, that should be the January tenth meeting that we approve.
Yeah. We'll get that noted, okay, anything else? So we have a motion saying to approve the meeting minutes with the change.
Change.
Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion carries. Thank you, Marty. Uh, next is our public forum, uh, do we have anyone who would like to address the council tonight? Well, okay, close our public forum, move into our business reports. Walter, I thought I saw you come in, give us the planning report.
Yeah. Good evening, so, uh, a little bit of stuff went on, our February sixteenth regular meeting, we had a preliminary plat that we reviewed and approved for Osborne.
What's that?
Oh, sorry. Um, and that was all of our February meeting and pretty much is a quick one, and then Sarah, on our special meeting with Juliette Ritchie, which was, I'm now forgetting the date, what that was?
February twenty-third.
Thank you very much, on the twenty-third there, uh, we went over our updated future land use maps and master street plan, and the additional, uh, change we made was that Tom, the attorney, had a, a special zone that was gonna be created in the area of town. It's where, you know, the connector that we were gonna have between Phillips and Granite, if you guys remember that from the map, it kinda snaked up and connected to Cemetery first and then went off to Granite. Well, the portion from Phillips to Cemetery was such a contested area and where a road might actually go, that Tom's working up language that will be clearly on the future land use map with the master street plan, that says that that particular area will be where a road has to go, but that route won't be actually shown. It's, it's a weird deal, but Tom said it would be fine, Juliette thinks it's, it'll work fine, so we're like, okay, that, that seems to be the best way forward with this, 'cause we really need that connector road somehow, 'cause otherwise Campbell will be a, a parking lot, and so.
I want it to be shown.
Because if we want to force a developer to put it on there, for them to make that through road, or at least an open-ended road that could connect on up, then it has to be shown on the map, however, there's so, it's such a contested area that we can't possibly right now imagine where a route could be, but we know that it's gonna have to be, that if somebody does develop out there, that we will want them to do that road. So it's just a way of covering ourselves to then being able to require that road being built.
Keep people from throwing up.
Keeping it open, we won't be requiring the whole road built, just open-ended.
Well, where Juliette initially wants it is through my house and barn and my property.
There's been some discussion.
So.
This, this solves that, and, I mean, it's all, it's kind of moot point anyways, until someone actually tries to develop out that area.
So basically you have something saying you've gotta put a road in this spot?
If it develops up to the point that we want that road put in.
Not specifically this spot, but this?
Yeah, in this general area, and it's a small enough area, Tom, Tom was saying that if it's too big area, you can't define it easily enough. He's thinking that this is a small enough area that we can get away with that. So that will be that, and then upcoming, oh, we are officially, I saw the email here just about an hour ago, we are officially down one member, and here about a week ago, we got an application, so hopefully she will show up to our meeting and we'll give her a recommendation to be on it, and we'll go from there and have a full commission again. And beyond that, our next meeting here is Thursday, the sixteenth, six-thirty here, where we will be reviewing the final plat for the Osborne subdivision, and it's, it's a real simple one for, for lots, and it looks pretty straightforward, and that's all we've got, oh, actually, no, that's not it, we've got our, our, our public hearing scheduled for... Where are you at? Man, I am not prepared tonight, I'm sorry.
Blair, a time change?
Uh, it's a little bit.
April sixth.
April sixth, thank you, at six-thirty here at the court's building, so April sixth is when we have scheduled our public hearing to possibly recommend approval of our future land use map and master street plan. Yeah, that's it for me, I think.
Any questions for Walter? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy, court report?
Okay. Uh, the disbursements were up about thirteen thousand over last month, and they're up thirteen thousand over la- well, sixteen thousand, more than sixteen thousand compared to last, same month last year, there we go, that's hard to say. Okay, um, our citations turned out to be about the same on the current month and previous month, the two fifty-four and the two thirteen, um, but mostly that was just because we did a lot of warrants, so that kept our numbers up, there weren't actually that many citations that were issued, but we worked on approximately the same number of cases that way. We are not having court next Thursday, or the one after that, 'cause we won't have a judge, and then it's a good Thursday, so we won't. And then, um, Jessica and I are scheduled to do training on like April twentieth, we'll be in Little Rock, uh, for our training, I was supposed to be in Springdale, but I moved it to Little Rock, I don't know why. We're still working on catching up on scheming, and we had a lot of compliments last week about how quick our court is, they're like, man, that was just really quick. Uh, the, the judge gets everybody in here and out, and they didn't have to wait in line very long at the window, and, um, it's a little bit stressful on court days if you guys have not been in here, 'cause we have a bunch of people show up, but, um, it, it makes you feel good when they, it's not the worst one they've been to. It's some of them, you know, visit a lot of them, anyway, but they were, they were happy with the way that they were treated when they were here and how quickly they were processed and, and on their way. That's all I have.
Any questions for Tracy?
I also will say, Ellie's been helping us, and we've been going through like all of our old warrants, like if they didn't have files, um, they've, we've just been cleaning things up and getting things organized, and we're all working together really well, getting that, also, it's a, it, it's amazing how many things are back there that warrants that never got pulled, so.
Okay, thank you. Blair, library report?
So we had, our checkouts were up from January by almost seven percent, uh, gate counts were up thirty-eight percent, and that's a lot, um, but I think that's 'cause of the snow and the holidays in January. Uh, we have been, uh, we started processing our manuscript collections, and we have the Good Earth Garden Club records, uh, fully processed now, so if anybody is interested in seeing those records, there's photographs, minutes, newspaper clippings, all the way back to, I think, nineteen eighty-two. And, and tomorrow at three-thirty, we'll have a knitting class as part of our homesteading series, and on Thursday, the master gardeners are gonna come, um, and they'll be teaching a class on cooking for teens. Any questions?
Questions for Blair?
Thank you.
She's not gonna wait around.
She got out there before you might have.
Good evening, uh, I'd like to echo what Tracy said about Ellie, she's really been, uh, I don't know, she's been doing a great job, straightens things up, just everything from, just labels have been beat up for seven years and you can't read, you just keep on working through, she's like, why haven't we fixed this, I was like, that's a good idea, let's, let's fix these so we can read them. Um, so it's been, things look a lot better up there. Had two-hundred-and-fifty-six calls per service, a little bit down for the year, but pretty much on our pace now, especially since we're dealing with limited personnel and all the other stuff going on. Uh, still no update on Officer Cordero, still on the holding pattern for the state of Get Beck, what's on that? Beck is still at the academy, uh, did have the privilege to go out there with their night fire last month, and, uh, it's a big, it's a big class, fifty-three people, like, it's the biggest class I've ever had, so I guess that is kind of promising, maybe, uh, there are some people that wanna get in law enforcement, at least the numbers in the academy seem to imply that, um, so that is a kind of a promising thing to see. Um, he did his driving last month, so I've got to go down there and do the fun part, one of the fun parts of the academy, and he'll be graduating April sixth, and then transitioning over to our training program here to do some field training before he's out on his own, so, uh, we're eager, eager to get him out and done and ready to move on. Uh, and then last day, this literally came from the school, they had a workshop with the school board prior to the school board meeting, which is going on now, on school safety, so the state, most you may or may not know earmarked a lot of money, uh, across the dist- all districts to do school safety improvements, and they put up in a priority, and the only reason I mention it is they've, uh, I've had a seat at the table in pretty much every single one of those meetings, so they're taking a lot of feedback and, and input from, uh, the first responders and the police department, and they're doing, they're doing a lot of good work over there, trying to properly use that money and increase school safety, uh, across the boards in a lot of different ways, they're doing a lot of good things over there, and, uh, so, uh, over the next year or so, I think you'll see more improvements in, in safety and security and stuff over there, and we're, we're playing a role where we can to help and give input, and it's, it's going well. That's all I got.
Any questions for Sergeant Goyens? Thank you, sir.
Public Works Director is out sick tonight, so we'll skip to parks.
Uh, before we do, is there any questions on Isaac's reports that I can answer? No? All right, Chad?
So I can go twice as long.
Yes, you can.
So we, teams for our baseball and softball season have been put together, uh, I'd like to say to finalize, but, uh, we're still looking for a few girls in, in a couple of divisions to help with numbers, a couple of small teams, but other than that, we have, we are put together, uh, rosters for the coaches, several of them have started practice already or soon. Our numbers as of today, we had two-hundred-and-forty-eight, uh, participants in the program with split between twenty-two teams. Uh, again, we're hoping to find just a few more girls in a couple of divisions to help out, so that's, it's about where, I think we were up just a little bit, I think we were at two-forty-five last year, so after COVID, we've been shaking out around two, two-forty, two-fifty in that range, uh, which is still a little bit down, uh, before COVID, but still pretty good numbers. The good news is our, I met with the guy with the, uh, about the fencing for the tennis courts today, and they're supposed to get those started on next week and stall them, we'll get those things back open hopefully next week. He wasn't positive he had all the material, but he said he had enough to get started and expected to have it, um, in time to get it done next week, so I'm happy about that, I've had a lot of people, I didn't realize that many people were that curious about the tennis courts and wanting them back open, especially since it's got prayers, so that's good news. Um, the trail's been cut through, all the mulch is in, we're still working on some cleanup, just with the rain and stuff, we concentrated more on the fields, it just hadn't had time to get in there and do a lot of extra work. It is cut through and, and ready to walk on for sure. The bathrooms, all the plans have been approved to the state, they are in production, uh, I'm waiting on some site prep specs so we can get started on what we need to do to be ready to accept them when they get ready and, and come, we're still working on the date when that might be, and right now I don't have one. And the stage is still in works and development as well, and I think that's all I have.
Any questions for Chad?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Chief Meyer?
Uh, see, you had seventy-four calls last month, which is average, um, Travis did pass his inspectorate class, uh, so we did get a certificate, and it's already been a huge blessing to have him have that. It's already interpreted codes and a lot of building going on in Greenland, doing school inspections and daycares, it, it's really paid off a lot. Um, we did host an ARCAN class a couple weeks ago, included the police department in it, uh, just trained everybody on what to use with an ARCAN. You're gonna see a lot of smoke in the area probably this evening, they're burning thirty thousand acres south of us. Unfortunately, they said the wind's gonna be out of east, they go in every direction but out of east today, so we're gonna get a lot of smoke from that, but, um, I'm probably gonna have to look at replacing our excursion pretty soon, which is the last city hundred percent owned vehicle that we have, uh, they use it for our medical calls, which is the bulk of our stuff, so you know, the rear end is fixing to go out of it, we've already put a new motor in it, and it's just gonna be a money pit if we don't do something with it, so I don't know what we're gonna do, but officers have to keep you in touch, but we're also having to do an ISO test, having the new station insured in Mountain, to be able to qualify for the insurance rates, they come down to a new test on us, we're in the process of that, pain in the rear, but we'll see what it turns out. That's all I got.
Anything, Chief Meyer? Well? They are. Thank you, chief. Kristy, what is that that you have?
It's a fancy tablet. It's remarkable, it's pretty remarkable. Thanks for telling me about them. Um, so I'll start off by saying that you have reports in your packet that are not one-hundred percent accurate. Um, I don't really know what I did at the end of the month, last month, but I did not allocate all the sales tax to the departments like they should have been, so that was done after the first of the month, so um, when it shows that a couple of the departments are over budget on here, that's actually not completely accurate, 'cause I didn't get the sales tax allocated where it should have been until after the first of the month, so, um, the bank balances are still correct, we are down a little bit, um, which is not very surprising, 'cause we've had some big purchases at the, at beginning of this year. Um, but our sales tax is trending up still from this time last year, a total of about nine percent between the city and the county sales tax. Um, the water department, uh, their bank balances also show down, and that's not accurate either, because they're, they didn't get their sales tax, so, um, the bank balances are up, in the water department, although you can see down there that our sewer expenses were, uh, much more than what we took in, uh, this month, and I expect that to be the next couple of months also, 'cause it's rainy season, so hopefully we will level out like we did last year.
Hopefully sooner.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, even sooner would be nice. Um, we have given, um, our new auditors a lot of information, and they have started working, um, on some reports, we did get an email, uh, from Jim that he will not be able to complete the twenty-eighteen water report, um, he's had some change with his partner, anyway, they're not licensed to do it anymore, so we are working on getting all of that information together, because he's got a lot of the twenty-eighteen documents at his office, we're working on getting that together, and getting those to the new auditor so that they can go ahead and do twenty-eighteen water also for us. And he, I believe, has been in contact with them with some of the information that they, that they needed from him, so hopefully by May or June, we'll have those down and caught up, and I don't think that's wishful, I don't know if that's wishful anyhow, but we'll have it caught up much sooner than we would if we didn't have any forward.
Do we get any kind of refund from him, since he has done nothing?
So I have not, the only thing we have paid for that hasn't been done is the twenty-eighteen watet- wa- water plot it, um, and I have not addressed that with him yet, but I will, um, talk to him about that, so I'm hoping we will, but with the situation with his, I don't know, I don't, I'm not really sure what teeth we have in that, but I will absolutely address that with him. That's all I have.
Any other questions for Kristy? No? Thank you. Uh, next, item B, old business. Discuss possible revisions to the sign ordinance.
I have a question before we start talking about this. Is there something that we need to do before we get all those zoning done?
That's a great question, Jen.
Because it could have to change after that.
There's some truth to that.
I mean, I hate to spend a whole evening working on this to find out that it's not really gonna apply, 'cause it's gonna have to redo it.
Valid point.
So. Besides that, it's fifty pages long, which is crazy. And I read it twice and still wasn't sure, so.
The old one or the new one?
The, this one.
The new one?
The new one.
Did you read the old one?
No.
Yeah, I couldn't get to it all either.
Um, I was excited to see in this one that, uh, some of the signage is more appropriate as far as size that, that are allowed. So I think there was a lot of good things in this.
This one is better.
It's better, yes.
It is better.
It's just got a lot of definitions.
Yeah.
It's just a lot to cover.
It is a lot to cover.
I mean, I just think if we're gonna, you know, if there's a a subdivision goes in, and, you know, or whatever's going in, you know, I mean, are we gonna plan ahead now for what they can and can't do?
Oh, we do.
Mm-hmm.
You don't think so?
Uh-uh.
You don't think we do?
Uh-uh.
Am I the only one that thinks we do?
So I think what Jen's saying is that she would, she thinks there, there may need to be some coordination between this and the zoning.
Yes, yes, so we need to look at, at those together, rather than, you know, pick and choose.
Nice to see what you start up.
I know, I know, I, it's unbelievable. All because of a pumpkin sign. I know.
Or park.
Sad, thank you, I knew it. Well, I know I saw that, one of my questions that I did have about it was, you can't have a sign on the vehicle, or you can? I was reading through it, and I'll just put it down. And what about when we do the pancake breakfast for the fire department, and we put up a sign, um, down here on that?
Number one, that's a government, right, so the city sponsored, yeah, uh, so it, it makes specific allowance for anything that's city-sponsored.
But also on page six says regarding vehicles, that it shall be unlawful to use a vehicle or trailer as a sign in circumvention or violation of any part of this code, so.
Like campaign?
I think it's just trying to, like, it's because you can't put a sign out in your yard, or somewhere, you can't just slap a sign on your vehicle, is what it's saying.
Well, and you can't, you can't put out a for sale sign by owner?
Yeah, those are all, uh, permitted, but what it's saying is you can't use a vehicle as, as that sign, so you can't park a semi truck in your, uh...
Well, you can't do that anyway.
Or dump trucks over passes.
Dump trucks on overpasses, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think using it as a sign would be more, and Morgan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's more like, you see them, uh, there was this, there was one down here at the, at the airport advertising insurance for a while, they basically had a box truck and they, it was just parked there, it, it wasn't driving, it, it wasn't a truck with a sign on it, it was a sign.
It was a billboard parked.
Billboard, yeah, parked.
A mobile billboard, that's a, so I think that's...
That's Greenland's problem. On ours.
Other thoughts?
Well, I just think that, I mean, we can look at it, I'm sure, but I just don't see the point in hashing it out now and then having to hash it out again when we, uh, put this zoning.
But if it's in place, they'll know what they have to do, kinda like Marty, you know, if a developer knows what's gotta go in, then there shouldn't be any discussion.
So you're making the argument that we, we pass this and, uh, planning now has a document to base their ordinance. Instead of, instead of our ordinance going off a planning document, you're saying planning go off of our ordinance document?
Would we, are you, like, suggesting difference between the interstate commercial versus the, uh, mixed use, like, what, you know, what we would allow to go in interstate commercial is way different than what we would allow go into the mixed use, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, to some degree, yes.
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I, I don't see it matter in one way or the other, really, 'cause, I mean, you can work with it either way, either we have it on hand, or once we create those zones and say what the general, uh, density of the development we want going in there is, then it would kinda be more, uh...
So which would be easier?
I don't know. I don't think it'd be, I don't know, it would be easier either way, I think it'd be the same amount of work either way, I guess, I don't know.
What do you think, Mayor?
Um, I think this is a, this is a, a much better ordinance than what we had, I think it's also still a very detailed ordinance.
Very, very detailed.
Extremely.
And, and I, you know, for, for a lot of reasons, it has to be, right? Uh, so for every one of these details, it's because somebody has tried to, um, you know, slight the system. It just is what it is, um, unfortunately, we can never put enough details in there to...
For somebody does it.
Right, that's right. So, isn't it improvement, yes, is it, is the city gonna be able to, uh, enforce everything in here? No, uh, we're not, we're not gonna go around, we're not going around right now enforcing, uh, all of the sign ordinances, uh, we, to be perfectly honest, we pick and choose, uh, that battle, because until we, until it really comes up as a problem, um, we don't have the, the resources to, to have somebody going around town strictly enforcing a sign ordinance. And that's whether it's one page or whether it's thirty pages, so.
Well, and our police officers have enough to do at short notice without having to worry about sign.
Correct. So, I am more of the, the Marty direction, I would rather give direction to planning, uh, because this, this body votes yes or no, where that body votes to make recommendations. That, that would be more, I, I get where Jen's coming from, it, 'cause it really is something that needs coordination between the two.
It is.
Um, I would just rather it be going that direction as opposed to them bringing it to us. And the reason I say that is I just hate for them to bring it to us, we pick it apart, right, and, and we've got a whole committee that's over there going, man, we've been working on this for three months, and we brought it up there, and they just, you know, tore holes in it.
Can we not meet with them and see what their suggestions are, and just kinda...
Uh, we could, we could, we certainly could, um, I would just point out that they've been meeting for about two and a half years now, and, and we, as a body, um, have not been real good at going to see what they are doing, um, and they are trying to bring their stuff to a closure and a, uh, public hearing, so I would really rather not throw this back in their lap.
Okay, well, I wouldn't say throw it in their lap.
No, 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 I know what you mean, but...
You know, let's do it together.
They, they are trying to, to wrap a piece of their section up, and it would be, it would be good for them to get a win and get something accomplished, um, as well as for the city to get that accomplished, so. I'm not saying we have to do anything on it tonight, I'm just simply saying, I, I, I would rather it go that direction, but totally get your point, 'cause I, I think it does need to be coordinated.
There is a section, in here, section four, the permit required section, that also I think is helpful, um, you know, in that you have to apply for a sign and then the code official looks over the application and, um, the, the applicant has to provide the information for the proposed sign, so that whole section, which is two and a half pages long, it's very detailed, but I was just thinking, you know, in our discussion about the zoning, um, you know, that could be helpful, whereas, you know, if somebody
Where they know what they have to do, yeah.
If somebody came up to us and asked us if they could put this sign, or hey, I put this sign, um, you know, it wouldn't be like they would be asking us, but hopefully the code enforcement.
To use the code official?
Uh, so it most likely would be Isaac that was making the decisions, uh, it could, could fall to Aaron, um, he's the one that does code enforcement, but typically on a building, on, on something new, Isaac's going to, to be on top of that.
Well, it is, it is a lot, but it covers everything.
It does, and, and to Marty's point, I like the fact that it is, it is out in front of the sign being there, so it's not just a uh reactive ordinance to, we can do this with signs that are already in place and we can govern this, it is, before you put a sign up, here are the rules that, that govern it and, and what needs to happen.
That's what I like about it.
Who needs to give approval, yeah. Uh, one question I had, Marty, did you ever find the permit fee?
I do not.
I did.
I know I'm a party.
Um, no. I didn't.
It just says a non-refundable.
Yeah.
A set forth in a fee schedule. So we would probably need to.
So I, I know at one point it, it referenced the uh schedule of fees, uh, which isn't in here either, uh, which I'm fine with, um, I'm not looking to charge for it, uh, I know it was always aggravated when I had to pay a sign permit in Farmington.
Yes.
Or a banner permit, uh, anyway, I ju- I just wanted to make sure I hadn't read over that.
You have no free garage sale in Farmington.
That's right.
Uh-uh.
So they can get their cut.
I like it.
Really?
What, those of you that maybe haven't spoken or don't like it, what do you not like about it?
I don't like it, I don't dislike it.
Maybe we can go that direction.
Ain't like that.
Well, there's, there's a lot there, but there's a lot of different signs.
There's a lot that's not there now that could be there, like y'all's own that's in Farmington, that's outrageous.
Yeah.
Y'all, I just work there.
You work there, you're part of it.
You're associated with it now.
Yeah.
So what do you guys wanna do? Are there, are there particular parts of this that anyone would like to discuss, uh, in detail?
Why can't it be at a, at an intersection? I mean, if we're talking six square feet, I mean, that's nothing, really.
And what part are you, what part are you talking about, Jen?
Well, it's, it's stated that it could be I don't remember where it said, I saw that at Mark, but, that it has to be, that they can't put them up in intersections and they gotta be ten feet away from the sidewalk and that's it, it'll be on somebody's porch.
And, and I think, and I don't, I don't know exactly what spot you're talking about, but I'm wondering, is that, is that with regard to making sure that it's not interfering with line of sight so that cars can see?
Well, yeah, I mean, the sign, the size itself will, you know, I mean, that's a given, but.
Are you in the definitions, do you remember if he was in the definitions, or was it like in an example?
I don't remember, I was, I started reading it.
Okay, let's just try to. On page eight, it talks about temporary signs and it talks about six square feet and eight square feet, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, no, well, it said it can't be.
That may be what, that may be Misty's favorite part of this, talking about the temporary signs and, and the timeframe for, for taking them down and the size. Were, were you happy with that part, Misty?
Well, it said that it has to, you have to apply for the sign and then for, give them the dates and then have it taken, what date you're gonna take it down.
So, are we saying now someone would have to do that, is that what you're saying?
Uh, that, that would be, so if there was a complaint lodged about a sign, then yes, that's how it would shake out.
That they would have a date to take it down?
Yeah. So what, what I can tell you by, by passing this, uh, not everybody that's had a yard sale in West Fork is going to all of a sudden know that, oh, there's new rules about putting up my yard sale signs, so they're not gonna come to the city and say, hey, I'm putting up a yard sale sign or, or pumpkin sign or any other sign, right, so we're still gonna have that same thing where signs are going to show up overnight and nobody's gonna know when that sign showed up, so trying to enforce some of that stuff is still gonna be difficult even with this.
It's on page five that she was talking about.
Page, page five?
Yeah. Just carry one from the bottom. I think.
So, uh, item D, section two, item D, paragraph six, signs that constitute a traffic hazard are prohibited and no sign or other advertising shall be erected at the intersection of any street in such a manner as to obstruct free or clear vision?
Well, I don't think I've seen a yard sale sign or a pumpkin sign or anything that was obstructing vision.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I, I don't think so either.
No, not a traffic hazard.
I did underline it there, by the way.
Oh, my gosh.
Hey, I underlined several things that I was looking at, can't affix them to trees or utility poles. Yard sale signs get affixed to trees all the time.
And utility poles.
And utility poles.
And sign posts.
And sign posts, yes.
And like I said, it's not, we, we will not, whether this passes or not, we will not divert energy into trying to track down every uh yard sale sign stacked up.
And please do not call the city if there's a sign, no, I'm just kidding.
Or pumpkin sign.
Yeah.
So I actually have a question when I was looking at it, where it talks about on page five and section two, when I was reading over it and C, it says commercial signs in residential zones, that commercial signs are prohibited unless approved by the city of West Fork, so what I thought about was like conditional use, uses of properties, so, um, like let's say that somebody wanted to open up a tax business in their home, and so maybe they wanted to get permission to use that as a home in a residential area as a commercial use, and they wanted to put a sign out in front of their home advertising for their conditional use permit to be a tax person, I wondered about, like, should we put anything in there and about that it has to be temporary in nature because it's a conditional use, because you wouldn't want them, I would think, putting up a very permanent type of sign up with a conditional use permit, that was one thing that I thought about in terms of zoning and signage and stuff.
So, Deana, I think, good point, and I, and I may be mistaken, I may have it confused with the, the old ordinance, but I believe we have there's something that currently says that addresses that, signs at homes, um.
Anyway, that's one of the things that I thought about, just that we would wanna specify with conditional uses that it has to be a temporary type of sign, I would think.
Is there a date of termination on a conditional use?
It depends on, it's whatever condition you wanna place on it.
So then how, I mean, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna sell honey from my house and I want my honey and I'm gonna sell it forever,
Exactly.
my conditional use, then why does my sign have to be temporary?
Well, and that's
No, I think
But then would, yeah, so.
As far as that, I mean, the conditional use permit is its own entity and has no other bearing on anything else, so the conditions placed in that are solely for that also, so I mean, there's some, still some ambiguity there, but, right, if you're allowing a business and then you've got ordinances and dictating the signs, the business is gonna be, yeah, so that's, I don't know how that works.
But I think there's also, not trying to nitpick, but there's like a semi-permanent type of, you know, signs, like if you put up a big brick sign that somebody might put up in town, that's permanent, you know, big structure. But, I mean, you know what I'm saying, as opposed to something else that might be able to be removed easily, you know, just, I don't know, I was just thinking about that, so maybe a happy medium, I don't know. So, that's the only thing that I thought about when I was reading it. Otherwise, I thought it was much better than the old one, much easier to read and understand.
Always a lot.
And the conditions are all met, but just, and the conditions that it's not advertised, is that what it says?
Yeah, it would just be.
So, what is the, and I'm just not finding it, I think, um, the subdivision sign? Is there an example of that?
There's a picture of one in that.
Do we have a fee now for signs?
No.
Page one, three, six.
Yes, thank you, okay, so, Deana, I'm, I'm trying to look, um, there's a, uh, sign regulations by district?
Yes, I saw that.
Okay, and so I think the, the only signs that are allowed in residential right now by, by right are subdivision signs, which are, I've lost it now, but it's basically that big sign saying you are in
Right.
this subdivision, so, so to your point, if somebody did put in a home office there, uh, in their, you know, from their home, they would not be allowed any sign
Okay.
by right, and I think the way I'm reading it, they, they could come and petition the city, and I don't remember where we were on that, section two, I believe, wasn't it? Section two, uh, item C.
C.
So, commercial signs are prohibited in residential zones or on property used for non-transient residential uses, except for those properties on which a home occupation use has been approved, so I guess what, the point is, is if the city has approved it as a home office,
Then they can have commercial signs.
Then they could have commercial signs, so how does that? I think that is a point of discussion that needs to be, to look into a little bit deeper. And I think that, that happens sometimes, right, you, you start looking at these things and if you don't flesh out some of the the scenarios, it's hard to see how it, how it fits everywhere, but, yeah, I think, I think ultimately, or initially, we're, we're saying no uh, by right, but as soon as we say home office, we open it up to just about any sign, don't we? Any other thoughts on that?
I think if someone's gonna open a business, even if it is a home business, I mean, they have a right to advertise, or they should have.
Sure, I'm just wondering.
I don't want us to get so picky, nitpicky, that everybody goes, screw this, I'll just move to Farmington, it's better over there.
Other side of the computer.
You know what I mean? I mean, I'm serious, because people get frustrated at the simple things.
Is there anything that keeps somebody from hanging a shingle on them, you know, like just, you know, somebody opens up law office, you know, like we allow it, they could still put up a shingle, right, for it, you know?
Yes.
Yeah, so they're, on their, on building itself, it's just anything within, or is there?
Yeah, so this is, basically, this is looking to limit the types of signs that can go in residential areas, um.
Like you're saying, if we, if we allow a by right, you, well, because it, it goes to, if we would even allow it as, no, it would have to be a conditional use to let that home be used as a commercial business.
So, not necessarily, right? So they could come in and say, this is a, a home office based, or, what is the term? Uh, a home-based business. And if, if we, uh, if our code dictates, basically the way this is written, if our code dictates that, yes, you can have a home office in here, I feel like this is giving them
Yeah, the ability to.
Yeah, because it's just saying a home occupation or transient residential use.
Which to me, if they don't have a conditional use, then they shouldn't be able to put up a sign because it says, no, it's prohibited. So, if they're just
Does that mean they can't put yard sale signs up?
No, no, this is just, just if you're, uh, doing commercial activities in a residential neighborhood.
Okay.
Which we, we try to limit anyway, just because of noise and all the other things that can come, uh, from a commercial use. You know, the, kind of the idea of the zoning code is to, to section off or create buffers between commercial and residential. But there's, there's times when you have home occupations that are doing things that aren't really disturbing of the peace, but at the same time, the neighbors may not want you to have a eight by eight flashing arrow sign out in the front yard either, so.
I can understand that.
Yeah, so I, I think that's what we're trying to
They ought to be able to have a sign.
And I'm not trying to say they shouldn't be able to have a sign, like if they get a conditional use permit and they're allowed to do that, I'm just wondering if we need to have some guidelines for how big of a sign or what type of a sign in a residential area, because I get what Jan's saying, like we, you know, we want to have businesses and things like that, so if we allow them to have it, then of course they're gonna wanna have a sign up so people can find them. I just wonder if we wanna have some guidelines for residential areas, and we don't have to decide that right now, I'm just, you asked for input and I was giving you one of the things that I thought of, so.
In our current code, there, there is more direction in that area, I feel like. Who's read, who's read the current code?
I read it a long time ago. Yeah, I don't remember, I don't know if I got that far.
Am I off base with that? I think I'm right.
I didn't read the whole time.
I was in a hurry to get here and I left my remarkable at my office, which has the other code in it.
I have a paper copy, would you like to see it?
That's all right. All right, so, that's, that's an issue that we want, um, some clarification on, is that correct?
Yeah, I think, um, we're moving in the right direction, I don't think we're ready to vote.
To pass it, yeah.
Well, on page ten, it gives you the size already. If you look at that, it says sign face limitations.
Uh-huh.
Six square feet.
Is that just in residential, or is that? Just temporary signs?
Temporary signs.
Temporary signs.
Well, it's six if it's in your window and it's eight if it's on your property.
So, signs in residential, we need, uh, some more discussion on that. What are, what are some of the other points?
Commercial signs in residential? And then what denotes that it's commercial? Is, is there a distinction between a small business and commercial?
Not currently.
Or is, or is just any business commercial?
Any business is currently commercial.
Then I would argue the fact that the park creates more traffic and issues on Pleasant Street than a, than a small business would in a home.
And, and so is there a point, I'm not sure where your point is with that.
Because if, if it's a commercial, you know, when you say commercial, to me, commercial is harps. And a small business is two or three vehicles maybe there at a time versus twenty to fifty.
But it's still commercial.
If that's the question.
So I, I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that is the question. Um, so I think traffic would be one, uh, one piece of that, of that equation, so traffic, yes, noise, yes. Uh, light, uh, so a lot of times businesses, commercial is gonna have lights on overnight, where you wouldn't want that in commercial, so.
Whereas a small business doesn't, I mean, comparison.
Sure, so I, I think that's, that's where, um, some of that comes from, but, but currently, per our code.
It's just all commercial.
Yeah, but, commercial is
You have a business license.
It's commercial, yes. It's commercial, yes.
Or it's a conditional use.
Yes, so you can build, you can build a you can have a, an internet business in that building, or you can have a Walmart. There is nothing that says anything in between.
Size of the building, parking requirements, and that's, yeah. You got the space for it and, or vehicle crap, so as long as it's a small sign, it could go right there.
All right, where are we at?
We're on page eleven.
We're still discussing pumpkins.
Okay.
We've really worked this out.
Well, I understand this one is though, if it's obscure, if it can obscure the traffic or pedestrians, then it should be twenty-five feet from the intersection.
Yeah, yeah.
So long as it's.
How, how big is a pumpkin sign?
So.
It's small.
So do keep in mind too, in regards to that, our planning documents say that you can't build, um, a building any closer than fifty feet setback on the front side without a conditional use, or a
I think so.
a variance. So, commercial buildings have to set fifty foot back from, uh, basically the street, if you will, or the, the lot line, the property line. So, by having businesses keep their, their signs back more, that's not necessarily different than what we're causing the, the buildings to do already.
Well, Brandon's sign that he's got over at the cafe is, is kind of a, obstructive when you're trying to get out of a parking lot. But, I mean, I don't know where he would put it. He doesn't have fifty feet there to work with.
You're right, and so.
It'd have to go high.
Well, let's think about this, so.
I mean, where, what would he do?
So let's think about it, though. Just because we passed that, is that gonna apply to him, or is he gonna be grandfathered in?
Well, I would hope he'd be grandfathered in.
Right, so we're not gonna go around town and make everybody
Change.
spend money to change everything right away. And, and this is another issue that we're dealing with, with planning, right? So that lot is kind of a non-conforming lot, right? It's a little small, what, what are you gonna do there? So, we have those issues to work out as well, and that's, that's part of what planning's trying to do, is say, hey, our one-size-fits-all approach that we've been coming at this with for so many years, you've gotta have a twelve-hundred-square-foot house on a, uh, six-thousand-square-foot, not six thousand, eight-thousand-square-foot lot. It doesn't fit some of our lots in town that have had houses on them for years. If the house ever got tore down, you can never rebuild on it. This building in particular.
Right.
Uh, the building across the street. So, that's, that's some of what we're, we're not trying to go back and say, hey, you've been doing this for forty years, no more.
Well, if there's been a house on it for forty years, I, I don't think we should obstruct them from being able to put another one there, if they needed to.
Yeah. And that's, that's what planning is trying to work with, because currently, under the current code, yes, they are, they are held by the current code to say, eh, you can't do it. So.
There's got to be a clause somewhere in this. You know, I mean, I'd really hate to see, I mean, I know where there's some houses that you couldn't rebuild.
Yeah.
But I just don't understand, I don't think we should be able to tell them they couldn't do that.
Right.
Call it Brandon's, huh? Brandon's house, where he lives.
Yeah.
All right, how do we, how do we continue?
Table it until we, uh.
Well, I think we got more work to do on it, really, I mean.
So do we have some specific?
We can't approve this specific set tonight.
Okay, do we have specifics that we need to send back, uh, to Attorney Kiklak's office? Or do we have specifics that we wanna try to edit in-house? Do we have someone who would like to, uh, take a chair position in this and maybe make some edits?
I'm trying to get in on all that.
Misty volunteered?
No, Marty, Jan volunteered Marty, and I seconded.
I thought Archie volunteered.
No.
Sorry, Chris.
I know.
Yeah, that's right, you did.
What are your thoughts?
Well, one thought is, is, you know, I did bring up this, and now I'm wanting to fight for them being able to keep the pumpkin sign. Now I'm like, how do I do that without sounding?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Hypocritical, yeah, it would be really nice if you picked one side of the fence or the other.
I know, because I'm like, oh my God, are they still gonna be able to do that, and, you know? They needed it a four-way, not twenty-five feet back.
It's just one of those hometown things.
I know.
And you know how much fun they said they had? Because people came to their house eating pumpkins.
I know, and now I'm like, I wanna make sure they can do that.
So that we can move on to the rest of our agenda.
I say send it back if no one's gonna step up about the verbiage.
Okay, so do we have good notes on what our issues with the verbiage are? I know one is, is section, uh, two, paragraph C. So we, we can't just send it back and say, make changes, we need to send it back with the details.
I think I made notes.
You think you got it?
Yeah.
She made a lot of notes, actually.
And the other thing I wonder is if it needs to be more like in the conditional use zoning, whatever.
We want, we want out as, out of conditional use as much as we can get. So if we never do another one.
It's tracking and enforcement, it's tough to do, I mean.
That's true, okay.
Yeah, and every time somebody, and I'm not picking on Walter or the planning commission, but every time somebody comes in looking for a conditional use, the next thing, as city, what we do is we go into this mode of, additional use, you say, well, you can only have six cars there. You can only have, number one, we can't, we can't manage that. Number two, it's not our job to tell somebody how to run their business. Our job is to say, can you do this in that area, yes or no?
Okay.
And let it go.
Okay, so we need it in this document?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
How about the fee part? Is there a fee, or is there not a fee? It doesn't say yes or no, it just says fee.
Said, it says there is a fee.
What is the fee?
It does not say what.
We don't have a fee now, so it's a.
It has to be determined by the city.
Does the city council want to add a fee?
No.
No.
I, I say no.
But it needs to say one way or the other, I don't care what way or the other.
Agreed.
So, either need to add a fee, or maybe take some verbiage out of, or do we leave that in there in case the next city council, you know, all those people that are gonna run the next election? For them.
That's very forward-thinking, Marty, yeah.
No, I do figure that like we had to.
To have the opportunity to.
You're gonna make a good mayor someday.
So we put fee to be determined, and then if we determine there is no fee currently?
It's, so it says, uh, fee schedule adopted, so if you guys don't adopt one.
Okay.
There would not be one.
Right.
But it leaves it open for you to be able to adopt one.
In future. So if there's not a fee, it's actually not a, have to do an application.
If the city determines, there should be a fee. Not as the city determines, but if the city determines, there should be a fee.
But if there's not a fee, why are they filing an application?
I think, I think what Morgan's making the point of is that the, the ordinance is just, it's put together for, if we want it, it's in there, and we don't have to come back and add a, a schedule later. Basically, it's already mentioning there's a schedule, all we have to do to add a fee is say, here's the fee schedule, and it's done. Without having to come back and rewrite the entire one.
Gotcha. So if anybody asks, what's the fee, there's not one?
There's not one.
Yeah.
Currently, there is not one. Okay? I don't know. We haven't had a motion to table it yet, so.
I motioned to send this back to Attorney Kiklak's office with the notes that were
Taken.
taken this evening by his representative.
Okay.
Morgan, thank you.
I second.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion carries. Item C. New business. Uh, item one is to accept bid from Bank of Fayetteville for the highest interest rate. Is there any questions on that?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
In light of recent, very recent events, do you know if these deposits will be fully FD, or just the fully insured, or will it just be the two-hundred-and-fifty standard FDIC insurance?
Okay.
That is a very good question. Marty, why would you ask such a question?
Might be a banker. Might be dealing with some of this.
She's loaded.
No, I assure you, all of my accounts are fully insured. But, that has come up in the last couple of days, so I thought, mm, I'm gonna ask that.
Good question. How do we proceed with this? Uh, new business, item one?
One for the minutes, just so we have it in the minutes, 'cause I said this last month, but just because it's not in this document, I wanna make sure that we know, we did have another bid from another bank that was, we got before this sealed bid. So we had, on poor bank gave us a two-point-two-five, so they still weren't the highest bid, but we did have a third one, aside what we got for these sealed, sealed bids, so I just wanna make sure that that's, no, in the minutes, so we recognize that we got that also.
How many did, both?
Three.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Before we get that seconded, so the Bank of Fayetteville's letter, um, has proposed and committed a one-year commitment to this, so will we rebid?
Any year.
Yeah, so a wise council, uh, member brought this up, and I think this is something that, that needs to be monitored more closely. This is something Christie and I had talked about for a while, but we hadn't really taken any action on. So, Misty's probably done the math on this, um, but looking at these numbers, this represents a large amount of money for just holding our cash, right? And so in the past few years, we have become complacent because there have really been no interest rates. So we, we haven't really cared, our money's been in this bank or that bank, right? Uh, but we're talking, uh, what is it, I don't even remember what the numbers are now.
Three-point-seven-five.
Three-point-seven-five at a million dollars.
That's good.
Couple bucks.
Yeah. Uh, that's thirty grand a year. Just, our money's gonna sit in the bank anyway, right? So I do think, especially as we have a changing economy, we have interest rates again, uh, we need to be aware of this, and this is a year, and a year we need to, to go request bids again and, and see, uh, if we get another rate.
Yes, I second the motion.
Is that everything?
That's it.
Okay. We have a motion in second, any other discussion on that? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion carries. Item two, authorize bank transfers and transactions for the higher interest rate.
I make a motion to be authorized.
I second.
We have a motion in second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no, that motion carries. Uh, item D is other business, does anyone on the council have any other business? No? So, a couple things, um, John, I've got a couple things.
Yeah, I figured.
So one, I wanted, wanted to show everybody, uh, the award we received. So, Jan pretended like she could read it from over there, I know good and well she can.
I tried, but I couldn't quite hear it.
So McClellan had reached, McClellan Engineering, Nick, had reached out to us, uh, saying that, um, they were putting in this project, this sewer expansion project for, uh, an award. And, anyway, he got back to us and said, hey, guys, we, we actually, we won the award, uh, for this project, uh, tying in our sewer to Fayetteville. And so we asked if a couple of us would come to Little Rock, uh, to the award ceremony to pick up our award. And I can tell you that, um, without question, everybody was a little bit hesitant about driving to Little Rock to pick up an engineer's award. However, the pot got sweetened, and they said, usually this happens at the governor's mansion. Man, me and Christie were like, we're in. We'll never get a chance to go to the governor's mansion, we're in. Uh, we had some other people, uh, gonna go to, that weren't able to go, but they changed that silly thing, like the week after we committed, they changed it. Uh, so it was at a swanky, uh, country club, uh, down in Little Rock, we had to drive down there the other night, Thursday night, in the rain. Uh, Christie was tougher than me, she turned right around and drove back home at ten o'clock at night. I took, I, I took a detour at Conway and spent the night, but, um, but it was nice of them. It was, this A C E C, Arkansas, is a, is a national organization that is in the engineering field. I don't understand all their details, but it's, uh, some sort of a, uh, uh, what's the term? In politics, you get, uh, people that are always trying to influence the decisions of the politicians. Lobby. Lobbyists, thank you. Uh, A C E C, my opinion is, from, from this, uh, award ceremony, was they are some type of a lobbyist for the engineering, uh, in the U.S. Uh, but, yeah, it was huge, uh, it was, there were several projects from Fayetteville that were down there that won projects. Uh, I don't think Farmington had any, uh, or Berry Grove for that matter, or any of the other small towns around. I think it was just West Fork was the only small town around here that had an award down there, where's me?
Gentry had a ballpark.
Gentry, okay. So it was, it was really nice to get the recognition, to get called out for it. The first time I've ever walked a red carpet, I don't know about Christie, but, uh.
Bougie.
She does it all the time. It was, it was bougie, but anyway. It really is, it really is, with all fun aside, it was nice that, that Nick, uh, one, submitted that for an award, and then two, invited us down to, to see the acceptance of it. It was, honestly, it was a, a room full of engineers, so it was a little bit boring. But, uh, still pretty cool, pretty cool. All right. Uh, Christie did let me know, uh, prior to the meeting, that from Nick, we've heard that the manhole, uh, coating that they, they were having to go back and do, that's been kinda holding up that, uh, those ARPA funds, that should be finished up, completed, and we should have closeout documents at our next meeting. So that'll be good. I did get a phone call, I haven't heard anything from the state yet, uh, but an engineer who was down at the meeting the other night had called me prior to the meeting, saying that he saw where our bridge approval, uh, was completely finalized, uh, with the state, uh, so replacing the bridge over, over the river. He said the city should be getting some correspondence from the state soon, um, in regards to that. So he, he watches some site down there and saw it come through, so I thought that was good. And then, I think everyone's aware that Fayetteville tabled, uh, the sewer discussions, um, last week. So they do have their, their report back from Black and Beach, who are their engineers, uh, doing this study. They have the report back. Water and Sewer has not, uh, in conjunction with Black and Beach, they have not recommended a new rate, uh, scale to the city council that we know of. So as far as we know, that's, that's the holdup, is Water and Sewer don't know what direction they wanna go with this yet. So Fayetteville Council is continuing to table this until we get more information, so.
We'll add, they do have people going around looking for INI, in fact.
Do they?
They do.
When did they start that?
I don't know, it just came out my shop through the door.
I wonder if that started after I brought that up at a meeting?
It's a possibility.
That'd be kind of.
But they do have, they should be hard for them.
No, that is good, um, 'cause we've heard, we've heard horror stories about their INI and their water loss. You get a town that's using, you know, close, was it, uh, forty billion gallons of water a year, forty percent water loss. Man, that's a lot of water. But, uh, yeah, so that's tabled, we don't know, Christie, have you heard when did they?
I didn't hear if they set another date.
Okay. So we'll, we'll continue to monitor that, um, as always, please, please try to show up to those and change their mind, you know, like they can. Other comments from the mayor, we have closed applications for, uh, the position of police chief. We've received We received thirty applications. From, uh, New Jersey to Alaska, uh, from South Carolina to, I believe there was an Arizona in there. So thirty applications from, from many different places, uh, some extremely qualified candidates, uh, which is encouraging. Whoever we say no to, uh, we may be saying no to some very good candidates. 'Cause there's thirty people, I was, I was impressed with some of the people who actually volunteered. So very encouraged by that, uh.
So what's the next, how, who determines who else is gonna be interviewed in?
Good question, Marty.
The whole hiring, do you just appoint them, you say, I'm mayor?
Essentially, yes. Uh, so the, the police chief serves, uh, at the pleasure of the mayor, uh, so yes, that, that could be the, the tactic. Uh, that's not how we've done it in the past, and it's not really how I, I, I like to do things. So, uh, John and I were talking about this prior to the meeting. Yes, the mayor could come in and say, uh, this is my next police chief, please welcome him. But, uh, we have consistently, when we, when we make those hires, um, I bring it in as more of a recommendation and get the council to vote on that to approve it. Uh, and I, I think we'll continue that, uh, but at the end of the day, yes, they, it's, it's a mayor's decision. What we are doing, just so everybody knows the process, um, the last time we had a police chief that we hired, and this time as well, we have reached out to other members of the policing community, uh, that had experience and reputation in that community. The last time we used Doug Pope and Greg Stout on that committee, um, this time we're using, uh, uh, Greg Tabor and Brian Waters on that committee. So two people, lots of experience in that community, um, we, we of course have some, uh, a wealth of knowledge on the city council, uh, with a couple members, uh, three to be exact, uh, but with them being on the council, that's some conflicts with them setting in on the meeting, so.
So then will it just be the three of you? You, Greg Tabor, and Brian?
Yes.
Are you gonna interview with some of those that are out of state, um, based face, or you're gonna do?
We haven't got that far. So we have, where we're at, we had thirty applicants that closed on Friday. Brian and Greg both have, uh, their list of, of all of the applications. The three of us are meeting Thursday morning, uh, to sit down and to, uh, for the first time together, uh, discuss applications, discuss, um, when we're gonna set, uh, interviews, how we're going to determine who gets an interview, um, yeah. So I don't, I don't have an answer to all those questions yet, but that is what we are hoping to, uh, get decided on, uh, Thursday.
Well, it would save a lot of money if you did Zoom to start, you know, instead of.
You know, it could, uh.
One interview probably won't seal it.
You know, I don't know, and, and it's one of those things too, I, so I agree with you to some degree, but, uh, to another degree, I'm kinda, you know, we, we've hired a police chief from, uh, way outside of state before, uh, who got here and served, you know, a year or so, and decided that they'd made a mistake and they left.
Spent a lot of money on that, is it?
So, so part of me, Jan, agrees with you. Part of me says if they want the job in Arkansas, and they're from Alaska, well, they probably oughta be here for the interview. Uh, I don't know where we'll.
We agree.
Where we'll come down on that, but.
But how much are we held accountable for the coming?
Yeah. So don't have answers to all those questions, but yeah, those are, those are definitely things that we are sitting down to, uh, to discuss on Thursday morning. Any other questions about that?
Good luck.
Thank you.
'Cause I, I mean, you know, it all depends. You get someone from a big department, come in here as chief and think money's no object. Where you need to get someone that knows how this area works.
That money is an object.
Most definitely.
So you very have a good point, John, um, and so some of my big concerns, uh, on police chief. Want to know a little bit more about, about the job now, uh, six years later, but, um, but it's very much a, a position where you need to, someone that comes in here that understands we are a small, quiet community, but not someone that's coming in here to, uh, try to prop up their last two years before retirement. So you don't want a, just a dog that's laying around on the porch all day doing nothing, right? You want, you want somebody who's trying to build a department, who's trying to manage, uh, a police force and grow that force. But at the same time, not someone that's, you know, trying to run it like it's L.A. So it is a, it's a balance, it's a challenge.
Well, and that, that's why we're small enough, we need a working chief.
Right.
One that takes calls.
Right.
You know? Yeah, so, um.
You know, the green on chief is out on Saturdays, covering shifts, Saturday and Sundays.
Yeah, and from my understanding, that's why you didn't run for chief, right? Because you didn't wanna be out?
No, because. We, we did a lot of praying about it, and I didn't wanna be the one with the two years. I didn't wanna come in and do it for two years and then retire.
Because it is, I mean, that's, that's a legitimate concern, just trying to get somebody that's.
Yes.
That has enough experience, but also has enough fire.
I mean, we prayed about it. I almost did it.
Did you really?
Remember?
I was, I was actually just playing with you.
I thought you just didn't wanna give up your council position.
Yeah, no, no, I, I just didn't wanna come in.
He didn't wanna take a, take a.
A year or two years and make everybody go through this again.
Yeah.
And I've been there, done that.
Yeah. So definitely a lot of things to consider, um, the reason we have a, the reason I, uh, ask, uh, Tabor and Waters to, to assist is one, uh, they're in that, uh, that industry, if you will, uh, they know who to call to get background checks. Whereas a lot of those guys wouldn't even, you know, if I called up to Collins and said, hey, can you tell me, he's probably not gonna tell me anything, but, um, if a Greg Tabor calls, um, you know, chances are for Greg Tabor calls, he can get information on somebody in Alaska. So that's, that's another big, uh, role that they play in it, um.
And both of them's pretty familiar with our area.
Yes, they are, they're both from here, yeah.
I think they're a good choice.
Yeah, I do too. I, I don't think you can, definitely don't think you can knock the choice of, of who is, who assists.
I thought the first two was better, but I'll go with this one, yeah.
Anyway. All right, John, what else you got?
Uh, nothing. I'll make a motion, we have Jared.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries.